Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the September 19th, 2024 meeting to order. This time, you know, the commission utilizes speaker request form. So if you'd like a speaker to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located at the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return to Commissioner Clerk Geraldine, located at the left side of the dais. At this time, what I'd like to do is I'm going to read before we do the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. We did have Commissioner Buschard pass away a while back, and there's a celebration of life for him tomorrow. But I'd just like to read something that went out to the staff. The family of former Commissioner Ron Buschard has extended an invitation to all county employees to his celebration of life later this month. Mr. Buschard served in many roles in Pennington County, from the attorney and state's attorney's office to serving as commission assistant to being elected commissioner of the Board of Commission for two terms over the course of almost three decades. His dedication to service was apparent to everyone who worked with him. Former Commissioner Ron Buschard's celebration of life party will be held at the Central States Fairgrounds in the Creative Arts Building on Saturday, September 21st at 2:00 p.m. Attire for this celebration is casual, and the band Mr. Buschard started playing with in 1972 will be playing at the party as well. So I wanted to, before I do a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, I'd ask you to keep Mr. Buschard in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance is this by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roskinek, seconded by Drews. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to the Pennington County employees' years of service recognition. And what I'll do is I'll have the commissioners and myself come down, and I'll read them off and call them up and give them to you. Is there any comments commissioners want to make before we do that?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say we're just lucky to have such good, dedicated employees, and let's hope that we can keep them for a while.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Well, I would totally agree with that. Dedication and length of service really provides a lot for the county, for our constituents that we deal with throughout the county. So appreciate that service, your dedication to the county. Thank you.
And myself, I'll ditto what the commissioners have said. Your long-term service means a lot to your community and to the people that you work with. They look, they look at you for the experience and advice, and your commitment and diligence to serve in the public is unwavering, and we really appreciate it. So with that, I'll come down and hand out the, well, I'll come down. Okay. And I'd ask, if department heads are here, I think they... First on our certificate is accountant, AP Specialist for Pennington County with 20 years of service, and dedication is Cara Tynes.
Friends, I'm starting stuffing now.
Is she? That's dedication. I will take it to her personally after the meeting. Next, next on our list for recognition of 20 years of dedication and service is Trent Nelson.
I've heard of that.
I've seen that, too.
He might be on vacation if you want to take care of the head.
Depends on where it's at. I've seen that Trent retired. Next, for 20 years of service, for Pennington County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant David Olson. Next on our list is Captain, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, for recognition, 20 years, is Dustin Morrison.
He lives somewhere you want to visit, but he's also not here.
Where is it? And 25 years of service, recognition for 25 years of service is Bryce Beachman, and we, someone told me he wasn't here.
He's laying gravel on Slayberry.
Oh.
You guys tell these guys we're doing this?
We give them the option if they want to come get some.
Shift supervisor for Pennington Emergency Services Communication Center, Donna Nordell.
She was.
Next is the shift supervisor for Pennington County Emergency Services Communication Center with 25 years of service is Mary Shoemaker. Oh.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have Deputy Director, Pennington County Emergency Service Communications, Stephanie Olson.
Thank you.
25.
Very good. 30's just around the corner.
Thank you very much.
These are amazing years of service. I appreciate it. Next, we have custodian maintenance technician, Pennington County Buildings and Grounds, Dale Anders.
Dale is an evening employee, so he's probably sleeping.
Sleeping. How many years of service?
30. 30 years.
30 years of service and working nights.
He is, yeah. He's an incredible part of our team.
Great. Appreciate him. Next is building service supervisor, Pennington County Jail, Lyle Fisher. 30 years of service also, so congratulations, Lyle. Next, we have victim advocate for Pennington County State's Attorney's Office, Rochelle Werdenski. 30 years of service in the state's attorney's office. That's amazing. 30 years. I thought 27 years was long at Maryland.
She makes a great castle, did it guess?
Did she? Chief Deputy Sheriff, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, with 30 years of experience, Mark Hughes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate it. Good job, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Got any words you want to say about the sheriff?
This is your opportunity.
So now you're going to deliver all those?
One. But no, we really want to take the time to show our appreciation to all the hard work that you guys do. I mean, without you, Pennington County would, would be struggling. You guys have put a lot of hard work and dedication into what it is today. And quite frankly, I'm, I'm proud to be a part of your team. And so, thank you.
I'm going to echo.
All right.
I think the audience is looking pretty good.
You guys want to all give Mary a photo? Sure you want to end the shot?
Sure.
Yes, he does.
Everybody ready?
It's been 30 years.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Thank you.
Next, next on our agenda is Pennington County Laws, Control, and Safety Achievement Awards on behalf of South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and South Dakota Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund, and I'll recognize Commissioner Gary Drews.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we just concluded, as of yesterday, we concluded our state convention for the County Association, held here in Rapid City. We had a great turnout, super workshops that were conducted during it. But during that, also, the safety benefits provides the awards, and safety benefits has been a, a, a real, a real assistance to counties and cities in South Dakota in encouraging safety on the job. We're all interested in trying to protect the employee. We don't want employees injured if at all possible. It happens occasionally. But at the same time, we have departments that have really worked hard to make sure that employees are safe, and we, we appreciate that. And I have a couple of the departments today that I want to present their awards for, and they, these are not the first time that they've won awards as I've looked at, as I look at it. We've got Pennington County B&amp;G. For 23 years, they've won the gold award. Pennington County Highway also has won it for 23 years. As I look through the list of all the counties, those are the two most frequent that you see on this list. They have been acknowledged more times than anyone else by far for the work that they've done to keep employees safe. So we appreciate that. Pennington County Sheriff's Office is also listed as having eight gold awards in that, during that period of time, too. So, but today, I'd like to present the awards that were actually presented at the convention. And first of all, I'd like to call Joe and Sean up to receive the recognition for the Pennington County Highway. This is platinum level. This is the highest level that you can, that you can receive, and, and they've received it before. And I know that because they didn't get the plaque, they, they got the year plate that goes on the plaque. And so appreciate all what you guys have done. And then I also want to present to them the gold level one also that they, that they received. So thank you to both of you. Then I'd like to call Davis and Dave up from Buildings and Grounds. Also have their awards today. Again, they have received both the platinum and the gold also. And this platinum level is, is really difficult to achieve. It's not something that you can, that you can really do to get there. You just need to prove yourself that, that your department has been active in this and kept your employees safe. So, and I also want to recognize Walter in the back of the room. Walter is our risk manager, has done an amazing job since he's been here and working with the departments, encouraging them on, on the safety issues also, and we thank you, Walter, for all of that. So Dave and Davis, appreciate it. Yep. I also want to thank all of the departments. You may not have received an award, but if you've been working with keeping your employees safe, we appreciate it. It means a lot for the county, and with the number of employees that we have, I'm quite surprised at how good we've got through the past few years. When you, when you exceed 800 number of employees and you have the safety record that we do, it's extremely good. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Drews, and to everybody for their safe work, not only for the county, but for their families, too. So next on our agenda is a couple of executive proclamations, and the first one is National Service Dog Month, and I'll recognize Walter McDuff and Bomber.
We'll just let him look at you. Thank you, commissioners, Walter McDuff, Pennington County Risk Manager. I want to thank you for this recognition of our National Service Dog Month in September. Before I read the proclamation, I would like to let you guys know a little bit about our service dogs and what they do for us. Let you guys know he's only nine months, so he's still a puppy at him. You know, I could speak personally about service dogs is before I had, as well as you guys know, I had Bruno before Bomber, had to retire Bruno in April due to hip dysplasia on him. And then I was able to have Bomber get accepted into the South Dakota Service Dogs. Right out of me receiving him at eight, eight weeks, he started training at nine weeks. And what did the dogs do for us, you know? And it's just not veterans, it's anybody that experiences a traumatic event. I could tell you personally what it does for me. For 20 years, I was living with a stress and anxiety from my many deployments, and I wouldn't go to places. It, it, I refrained from going. It even kept me out of, out of the Lord's house, just because the mass crowd that is in there. Once I started with Bruno after I retired from the military in December of '22, it would, it actually opened me up to be able to go to the store with my wife, you know, something that I wasn't able to do since 2004, you know? They're a companion to us. They allow us to function in today's society with the issues that we have, and that's what they, they basically are for. They, they are, they are a, a working dog when they're with us, they're a family dog when they go home, you know? It just, it gives us the life that we deserve. And, and so thank you for what I'm about to read and recognize, all right? So executive proclamation, Penney County, South Dakota, National Service Dog Month. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity, excuse me, inclusive of all citizens. Whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability, and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Whereas service dogs enhance the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. Whereas service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead lives with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. Whereas service dogs help give the individual back the quality of life they deserve. Whereas National Service Dog Month aims to bring awareness to our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Whereas the county of Pennington continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now, therefore, in recognition of service dogs and adults and children with disabilities in our community, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners of Pennington County, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim September to be National Service Dog Month. We're, we encourage all citizens to celebrate service dogs and be respectful of the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of their assistance.
Thank you, Walter, and thank you very much for sharing your story with us, because I think that enlightens not only me and people in this room, but the public of what the dogs do for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd like to move to approve the chair's signature on the executive proclamation declaring September 2024 as National Service Dog Month.
Moved by Drews.
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Roskinek.
Mr. Chair.
Any comments?
I just want to say that, you know, in years past, I've seen these service dogs in airports and on the street, but I just, until I really got to know you, Walter, I didn't realize their role in life and how important they are. And so I think it is important that we expand that knowledge to the general public.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd echo Ron's comments. You know, we can't put your shoes on, we can't put ourselves in, in your place and understand what you and your cohorts face on a daily basis. And I, too, have gained a great appreciation for the service dogs since you've come to be part of Pennington County. So I want to thank you for the education that you've provided us, in addition to the fact that you're able to conduct yourself and do a great job on behalf of Pennington County. Between you and Bomber, you do excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I do have the proclamation I'd like to present to you. Guys want to come on down?
Sure.
one is for National Addiction Month, our National Addiction Professionals Day. And with that, I'll introduce Sheriff Brian Mueller, Chief Deputy Wiltchel, and Care Campus Director, Tony, Tony, I messed up your last name.
Tony Wirtchel.
Wirtchel.
He gets called a lot of things, but... Well, I'd asked Barry to do a PowerPoint for me today, but apparently he just said that he forgot, so I apologize for not having one of those ready. But I, I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege and thank you guys for the leadership that you provide to Pennington County. It feels pretty good to come in here today, and I don't know, I didn't add up how many hundreds of years of experience that you recognized this morning over several different departments, but we don't keep employees for 20, 25, 30-plus years without good leadership from the top down in the organization. And the support that you give to us elected officials and department heads to treat our employees well is just really, really rang out today as you're presenting those awards, and so I really appreciate that. And you get to hear from me all the time, so in just a second, I'm going to turn this over to Willie and Tony. But this was a big week for us here, National Addiction Professional Week. It's the first time that we've ever done that in the history of the Pennington County Sheriff's Office or Pennington County, and I'll let Willie and Tony talk about that in a minute. But our staff over at the Care Campus really have a front row seat to life, and you guys know that, and Lloyd, you've worked over there and can appreciate that. But the work that they do and the, the way that they serve our citizens with the amount of compassion that they do to show up and do the work they do every day is just incredible to me. I'm extremely humbled and proud of them every day, the work that they do. So this was a fun week for us, and I'm going to let Willie and Tony talk about what we have going on. So thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Sheriff. Just a couple of quick, quick things. Sheriff said I need to hold this to just a few minutes. I got about a 45-minute thing I'd like to talk about, but, because quite frankly, there is a lot to talk about, and you guys know that. I mean, we're, we've done a lot, and there's a couple of things coming up. Just as a reminder, we're just about ready to complete year number six on September 28th at the Care Campus, so we'll be starting year seven. That's kind of shocking how fast that has went, and you guys have been involved in a lot of that that's gone on the last several years. But I also, I want to thank the, the present commission that are sitting now, and also the previous, the tremendous support that we've had when we were putting the Care Campus together, and, and what we've been able to do over the last six years. And when I say "we," really what I'm talking about is, and we just got a, a small handful of our 74 employees that are here today, many other employees are over there working with clients right now and dealing with, with, as Brian said, a front row seat to life. We are so blessed that we have so many dedicated and committed individuals that every day they come to work and treat, no matter how good it's going, how bad it's going, how tough the situation is, they keep, they treat all the individuals that are coming through them doors the same way, no matter how bad a day they're having. They continue to work to lift them up. So again, like I said, this is just a small number of our 74 employees. Just to give you one more little factoid, you know, since the inception of the Care Campus, we've had over 140,000 intakes, and that's a lot of folks coming through them doors, and there's many other numbers that are not even in that when we talk about what our counselors are doing and, and outpatient and all the different things that go on in that building. So again, I want to thank all of our employees for their hard work and what they do every day. And what this, why this all really started at the beginning of the year, our employees, we were sitting down, the sheriff and I and our, our staff, and seeing what are some different things we can be doing. And, you know, many different organizations are recognized, law enforcement, corrections, nurses, I mean, we got a lot of different entities that have days and weeks of the year. And we never had anything that we did for our folks that, as the sheriff said, front row seat to life every day. And so with the help of Tony and our leaders and our team at the Care Campus, they've been working on this for a while to put this together. So that brings us to where we are today. So Tony Wirtchel, who's been a member of the sheriff's office for, I think, close to 32 years, able to add him to our leadership team at the Care Campus, because the next seven years, we're, we're going to make even bigger strides to make a difference with the most vulnerable in our community that we serve. And so I'm going to turn it over to Tony. So thank you.
Tony.
Commission, Tony Wirtchel, the director at the Care Campus. Before I read the proclamation, if it'd be all right with you, I'd like my staff to come up that are present and introduce themselves, tell you what they do and how long they've been working with us.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, and then when we get done with that, I suggest we do a group photo with your staff, because we have an official photographer here today.
Well, I kind of figured with Helene here, that would be the next course of action. Go ahead, Deanna.
Hi, I'm Deanna Nolan. I'm the clinical director, and I've worked for the agency for 16 years.
Hi, I'm Amanda Wiltchel. I'm one of the clinical supervisors. I've been working here for five years.
Hi, I'm Dawn Ryder. I'm one of the clinical supervisors as well, and I've been working there for most 10 years now.
I'm Lori Sargent, and I'm a counselor, and I've been there for 22 years.
Hi, my name is Sarah Meadows. I'm one of the certified addiction counselors, working in detox right now, and I've been there for five years.
I'm Amy P.
I'm Amy Peterson. I'm a detox tech, and I've been there six and a half years.
My name is Nikki Smith, and I work in detox, and I've been working there for four years.
My name is Amber Kirkpatrick. I'm a detox counselor, and I've been there about four years.
My name's Alicia Kimball. I have been there for about four, well, over four years, and I'm a Licensed Addictions Counselor.
My name's Hazel Campbell. I'm a detox technician, and I've worked there for a little over a year.
My name is Isaiah Shorple, and I've been working there for a year and a half, and I'm also a detox technician.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth by Rostic, Support Step, and I've been there for almost five months, I think.
David Osterm, the Housing Director. Been at Addiction Treatment Services for about six years, 35 years with the county.
Wow.
I never really kept track of the years, but I'm guessing we're well over 100.
Yes, we are. All right, so our proclamation in recognition of National Addiction Professionals Day. Whereas substance misuse and substance use disorders are a major public health problem that costs American society more than $400 billion each year, affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and in all communities through treatment, education, and prevention programs. And whereas addictive disorders are a treatable disease, and treatment of addiction is as successful as treatment for other chronic diseases such as diabetes, hypertension, and asthma. And whereas 2.4 million people were diagnosed with substance use disorders in 2022, and only 10.3% of these individuals received any type of treatment. And whereas addiction counselors and our technicians are uniquely qualified frontline healthcare professionals who are indispensable in the process of guiding patients with substance use disorders to recovery. And whereas 100,000 U.S. addiction-focused healthcare professionals have dedicated their lives to increasing awareness of substance use disorders and enhancing the care of individuals, families, and communities through treatment, education, and prevention programs. And whereas addiction professionals promote excellence in care by promoting the highest quality and most up-to-date science-based services to our clients, our families, and our communities, we now therefore, Pennington County hereby proclaims September 20th, 2024, to be Addiction Professionals Day in conjunction with National Addiction Professionals Day.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I'm going to make one comment.
Chair. I would like to move to approve the Chair's signature on the executive proclamation declaring September 20, 2024, as National Addiction Professionals Day.
Moved by Drews?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Discussion, I'm going to say something. And I really appreciate Barry, you know, and Tony. You know, I had flashbacks yesterday. I gave a tour to WIR rep, Western Interstate Region rep of the Care Campus yesterday, and sat through the whole thing, and we did a tour. As you may not know, I did work at detox for nine years when it was on lacrosse, and so the changes that, the feeling that you get when you're in that room brought back a lot of memories. And when you're dealing with individuals who are struggling with addiction, and as strong addictions as there is, I mean, to the point where they feel that they have to have it in order to function at all. And when I say physical addiction, I mean, when they start coming off of it, there's withdrawals, and there's hallucinations. They're not the same people. And I got to see some of that stuff yesterday, and it brought back a lot of memories. And I seen the staff working hard to deal with the situations that were happening, and I could tell the compassion is still there. So I really commend the work that you do because these individuals need the help and the compassion, and you guys get to know our communities, the people that are at the lowest point in their life, and find ways to help them to recover. And there's some that do by coming through those doors. And so the work that you guys do is unsurpassed in our community. You're helping our most vulnerable population, and you're recognizing as the human beings that they are. And that's great compassion, and I really appreciate every step that you guys have done. I've seen this program start from, well, I remember hearing about it from when it started on New York Street to a house with a couple sheriffs and the PD working up to what we have here at the Care Campus now with the wraparound services and the work that's getting done. It's just absolutely amazing. This community sticks out higher than anyplace I've ever been, and we should be proud of the work that you guys do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
If I might, you know, sometimes for those that are closest to it, we don't recognize what benefits are being realized by our residents and our people from Pennington County. So as Lloyd mentioned yesterday, we had the gentleman from the National Association of Counties that did the tour. It was a brief tour, I believe, but he got to see enough that when I asked him about it afterwards, I said, "What did you think?" And he said, "Absolutely amazing." Now, he's a gentleman that works mostly in the western states for NACO, but this is the first time he's seen any kind of operation like the Care Campus. One of the things I really appreciate about the Care Campus is that your programs are not so set and firm that you can't adjust on the go and make improvements and change programs, and maybe even eliminate some and replace it with something else. I think it's a very important factor for our county. So I thank you for all your work that you do for them.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
You know, the Care Campus is located in Rapid City, South Dakota, but it services the entire western South Dakota region, other cities, other counties, and other communities. So it is the, to me, it's a hub of care, but it just happens to be located in Rapid City. But sometimes I don't think people realize how far their services extend to area communities.
My final comments before I go to a vote and we do the pictures is I have the utmost respect for our leadership with not only the Sheriff's Department, but the Care Campus and so forth, because you guys work with our community, not only the most vulnerable, but you also work with the faith-based nonprofits. You guys draw everybody in to find solutions, and that's, I think that sticks out more nationally for us than anything else along with you guys. So we really appreciate it. With that, I'll go to a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Now we'll present you with it.
Tony, maybe the easiest is bring everybody up here.
Yeah.
We'll get a photo.
Hi.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shorty. I know, I always. Liz, Liz, Alicia, you guys can wait up front to the desk. She wants to wait up front to the desk.
Okay. Okay, okay, can we squeeze a little more?
Squeeze.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I'm doing what Deanna's doing.
Okay, everybody feeling good, happy, smile, keep. Congratulations. Not Kleenex in your Kleenex box. We talked.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yes. People love that.
Okay, thank you, folks. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and I'll recognize Joan Martin, Commission Coordinator.
Good morning, Commissioners. We got done with all the fun and appreciative things. Now we get down to business. Joan Martin, Commission Coordinator. The Board of Commissioner uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items. Item A, minutes from the regular meeting of September 3, 2024. Item B, approval of the vouchers in the amount of $4,114,227.54 as submitted by the Auditor's Office. Item C, to acknowledge the request to withdraw from Ms. Lois Westwald from consideration of appointment to the Pennington County Board of Mental Illness and Review and void the warrant of appointment dated September 3, 2024. Item D, to declare surplus for the purpose of disposal as scrap metal, 1 Renzor Waste Oil Heater Asset Number 005691 as submitted by Highway. Item E, to declare surplus for the purpose of disposal as salvage, 1 2022 Chevy C2500 Asset Number 25613, 1 2001 Chevy K3500 Asset Number 87457, and 1 2001 John Deere 644H Asset Number 005227 as submitted by Highway.
Okay, Joan, on that, did you say 2022 on the first one? It's supposed to be 20...
2002 Chevy C2500.
Okay.
Item G, to grant an easement to Black Hills Power, Inc., on the south side of the Rapid City Highway Division Department property located at 3601 Campbell Street as submitted by Highway. And finally, item H, to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of August 2024 as submitted by HR and Fire Administration.
Thank you, Joan. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews to approve the consent agenda. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, that brings us up to regular agenda items, and item number nine is the Financial Compliance Audit from the State of South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit, and I'll recognize Bruce Hints, Auditor in Charge. Hi, Bruce.
Morning. How we doing?
Good.
Bruce Hints with the Department of Legislative Audit. Just wanted to stop. We're pretty much done with the audit, under review right now. Hopefully they'll have it typed up and ready to go, and they'll get it out to that federal clearinghouse by September 30th and meet the deadline for the Uniform Guidance Part of the Audit. So that's where we're sitting right now. There should be three letters that you guys have. The one that has your letterhead, I need Lloyd's signature on. It's our representation letter. It's a standard letter. We get signed at the end of every audit. Just get some things in writing that have been discussed with various people during the course of the audit. I've got the original here. Cindy signed it already.
Okay. Is there any questions for Bruce? Do you have anything else to report, Bruce?
I've got two more letters.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to authorize the Chair's signature on the representation letter from the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit for the 2023 audit.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. I should wait till we get the vote, huh?
The other two letters, one, the one letter, these are both in our letterhead. The one has, on the first page, has the numbers one through eight on it. That is what we call our letter to those in charge of governance. That's basically a letter to the governing board. And basically what that does is outlines any issues that we maybe had during the course of the audit that we feel is important enough to bring to your guys' attention, whether it was something with the records, or with the officials, or anything like that, that we had any disagreements or disputes or anything. And as you read through the letter, I'm not going to go through it, but we didn't have any issues like that. Everything went real smooth as far as the audit was concerned.
Okay.
So the other letter that's on our letterhead is what we call our management letter. We have three methods of communicating with what our findings are through the course of the audit. We have some verbal, oral-type findings that we feel just aren't significant enough to bring to the board, but we talk to the officials about them, any suggestions or recommendations we have. And then what we have is this next level, which is this management letter. These are things that we feel need to be elevated to your attention, but they don't qualify as a major finding of any kind or material finding that needs to go in the audit report itself. And that's where the third level of findings come in, is we have written findings, written comments that go into the audit report, qualifications to the opinion letter, if there's things that are misstated on the financial statements, things like that. As far as the audit report itself, that we're waiting to have typed up, that final report, there are no written findings in it. The opinion letters say the financial statements were fairly presented. And as far as the federal compliance side of things too, that's where the findings would come in if we had any material non-compliance with the federal audit side of it too. And we didn't have any of that. It's a clean report, and it'll be a good report. So.
Bruce, how long did it take you to do the audit?
Oh, hours or, I was here, what did we have for hours? I can't remember what we ended up with. 400, 450, I think. I'm pretty sure it was under 500 hours, something like that. I've been here since, well, the first week or two I was here, I was finishing up Harding County, but I got here around the end of June. So first part of July, we started. I had two, two other people helping me, Cassie and Al both were here too. So.
Okay. I just wanted to recognize that it's not just something quick, the quote de that happens. I mean, you guys spend some time here doing.
And those hours will vary from year to year depending. It's mostly because of the federal compliance. You know, we only had to test one federal grant this year. It was the ARPA money. That's $6 million you guys used for some of the public safety salaries. And that wasn't too bad to test. I think last year, I don't know what we put in, right around $100 hours, I think, just in that grant area this year. Last year, it was pushing 200 hours, but we had about four programs, three or four programs we actually had to test last year. And I can't remember if we followed up. Two years ago, we were testing that, some of that COVID money too, and we had some issues with the rental assistance program. And I know we spent a little more time on that. I don't know if we followed up much on that last year or not, but that's where the time, I mean, as far as the rest of the audit goes, it stays relatively consistent unless we run into prompt or something.
Okay.
But we'll get more hours usually in the federal programs. We got to test them.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So I think this is a real credit to our auditor, Cindy Muller, and her staff. When you go through this and find very little as far as deficiencies, appreciate the recommendations and suggestions that you make for any improvements. But at the same time, I think the county can feel very good with the audit response that we received on it. So thank you very much, Bruce.
Well, that, I do have a couple of things just to talk to you guys about with that management letter. Like I said, there's nothing in the report, which is real good. So, and the only things I've got here, if you look at our letter, we got a couple areas, three areas that we cover, any deficiencies in internal controls, any violations of statute, contracts, grant agreements, and then any adjustments we make to the financial statements at the top of the second page. And as you look through there, we've only got the one area where we had some immaterial findings. We didn't have any adjustments to the statements, no written comments, like I said. But there towards the bottom of that second page, we had a couple immaterial budget overdrafts that we came across. And one of them was due to the new bond issue that you guys had from 2022. I think it was issued late in the year. There was some budget authority set aside for that initial interest payment, but it wasn't enough. And by the time, I think Cindy said she realized that they didn't have enough in, it was too late to bring it to your guys' attention to pass a budget supplement. So that was one of them. We had a couple, three other ones that were due to the, something new that GASB started in the last couple of years. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that governs how we financially report, how you guys how you guys financially report everything. But a couple of years ago, they started wanting to do different things with the leases that you guys are involved in and subscriptions. And there's journal entries that need to be made at the end of the year to properly report them the way GASB wants, and they create budget overdrafts. So, it's because the way the, when you record the lease, you record the lease proceeds as if you went to a bank, borrowed the money, and then you record the expenditures to pay for it. And then you record it again subsequently every year that you make that, basically, lease payment, loan payment, whatever you want to call it. If you want to think of it in terms of a bank loan that you're going to the bank and getting. But that creates problems for, from the budgeting standpoint until the end of the year, when, when they go through and the Auditor's Office goes through and calculates all these leases to come up. And there, again, it's a timing thing. They don't have time to come in and get a budget supplement to cover them. So, that's what three of the budget overdrafts were. The other one was due to the court services and the timing when, when they're getting the bills from the, mostly from the court-appointed attorneys, I think. I don't think it's too much from the monthly juror fees or anything like that. It's, it's the court-appointed attorney fees. These attorneys, I guess, are sitting on these bills, are sitting on their charges for all, for six to 12 months. And then they turn them all in at the end of the year, and Cindy has no way of knowing what those, what those amounts are going to be and what to supplement the budget. And, I mean, it was what, $70,000 is all, I think? It was under 100, I think that. It was about a $70,000 budget overdraft, you know? They're all things, you know, the reasons, sometimes we'll write comments when we have budget overdrafts, but these are things with the bond, with these, you know, you guys know you're going to pay it. It's not like it's, like somebody, one of the departments or something went out and bought three or four vehicles without your guys', you know, aware that they were going to do it and created a budget overdraft. Everybody knows you guys are paying it. You're obligated to, so we, we don't get as excited about those kind of budget overdrafts as, as maybe some other type. Same thing with the, with the subscriptions and leases and stuff. Those are accounting entries that are made, and you guys really don't have much control over that kind of stuff. This one, I don't know what the answer is, because Cindy and I talked about, you know, possibly getting some better communications with the attorneys or something, and I, I'm not real sure what the answer is. And I think part of it has to do with how the courts sends those bills down or something, too. Is that right? So, I guess just try to do the best you can and supplement whatever at the end of the year, and if it's there, it's there. If it's not, it'll be a budget overdraft, I guess. So, but, anyway. Other than that, I don't have anything else to talk to you guys about. Like I said, it was a clean audit. I want to thank Cindy and her staff for all the help they gave us and the job they do. Like I said, it makes our job a lot easier, too, when we come into an entity like this, and all the rest of the people that helped us throughout the course of the audit.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinck.
I see that there is no significant difficulties in dealing with the management. And with that being said, what would an example be of a significant, something being difficult? Not that it happened here, but I'm just, in other situations, I'm just curious what happens in real life.
Oh, if there, I mean, if we're, if we have a dispute with somebody over a finding or something like that, you know, if we're going to write a comment, you know, and maybe whatever department edit it's applicable to doesn't agree with it or something, you know, and things were difficult with them working with that individual or something like that, you know, and, and the, the option is, too, on stuff like that, if we ever run in, if we'd ever run into a situation, the, the entities always have the opportunity to respond to the comment. We've, that's always been there. If we have a written finding in the audit report itself, that you can respond and justify or explain what happened or, or stuff like that. But those are the type of things. I don't know, this, this is a new letter. We've just started issuing the last few years, so I'm not real...
Okay.
And we haven't really got, I haven't had any, anything like that yet either. So, if I get something like that, I'll let you know.
Well, thank you for your time to put this together. Looks pretty in-depth.
Any other questions for Bruce? Thanks, Bruce.
Anything else? I'll get out of your way, then. I was kind of disappointed, though, I didn't get some kind of an award. I thought you guys might have one, an award back there for me.
Thanks, Bruce. That's why I asked you how much time you had. Okay, next on our, our agenda is public hearing on Budget Supplement Resolution SP 24004, and I'll recognize Auditor Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And if I may, Mr. Chair, just have a moment of privilege. Casey did a fantastic job. And there are a lot of moving pieces, and like Bruce was talking about with, with the journal entries that we end up doing at the end of the year, and everybody pitches in to make sure she has what she needs, and they do a great job throughout the year. But that financial report is a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
And I am so thankful that I have staff that is capable, and as you heard Bruce say, we had no adjustments, which is just, makes me very proud of my staff.
And we are, too.
Okay, then we, the item that they have here is the Budget Supplement, SP 24004, to supplement the LEPC fund from restricted fund balance for $6,000.
Is there any question? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say a motion to approve the resolution for the supplement.
Any questions for Cindy on that? If not, I'd look for a motion. Mr. Drews?
I'd move to approve the Budget Supplement Resolution, SP 24-004.
I will second that motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinck. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Item B.
That is a request for a special retail on-sale malt beverage license for the Scenic Volunteer Fire Department ribbon-cutting ceremony, which will be held on September 28th. It goes from 10:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. Would ask for approval of that special license.
Any questions for Cindy? If not, I'd go to the Board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the special retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Scenic Volunteer Fire Department at the Scenic Volunteer Fire Department ribbon-cutting ceremony celebration and annual fundraiser on September the 28th, 2024, at 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM midnight, or AM midnight.
Moved by Roskinck, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Next, we come to items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Director Davis Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Pennington County. So, let's see, the first one, I'm looking for a couple bid awards here. The first one is our new Underwood Highway Shop Roof Repair, and this is actually a retrofit. What we have going on is, it's just your typical metal building, metal roof system. It is leaking significantly bad. When it rains outside, it rains inside as well. So, what we're looking at doing is a Sarnafil retrofit system, which adds, adds a layer of insulation as well as a waterproof membrane over top of the metal roof, and it actually has a better wind rating and things like that as well. So, and holds up better to hail. So, looking for that motion there toward the bid, but I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the responsible low bid award to Black Hills Roofing, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $78,812 with an additional 5% contingency for discretionary spending by the Buildings and Grounds Director for unforeseen expenses related to the project.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinck. Davis, thanks for looking and adding, taking the extra insulation, and I mean, if you're going to replace the roof, taking that extra step and, and doing it right, so it's going to last a lot longer. So, I, I think this is a good thing that you brought forward. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the second project, this is not your typical project that you usually see, but what we have going on in, in our jail kitchen floor is the grout is deteriorating significantly in places, and the grout requires replacement. What we have going on is, we're starting to get water underneath the floor and in some areas because of the grout that has deteriorated, and that's going to lead to more problems. So, we, we found a company out of New Jersey that does projects like this, where it's minimal dust control, it's overnight work. They can do about 400 square feet per night, and they will replace the sanded grout with epoxy grout, and it does have a 15-year warranty on it. So, I do want to mention on this, this, this did go out to bid. They were the only ones to bid on it, and though the cost seems significant, it is significantly less than if we were to replace the floor completely. Just to coordinate grout replacement in that kitchen alone is a headache because of the operations of the jail and how, how often that kitchen is in operation. So, again, I can't tell you what that cost is to replace the floor completely, but I can tell you that this is a much cheaper option, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinck.
I see a couple of things here. Number one would be whenever that floor number had the proper grout in the very beginning, because I think it's only four or five years old, if I recall. And secondly, that bid reflects the complexity of, they have to have a grout that dries rather quickly, so they can keep operating the jail in a kitchen that runs 24/7. So, it makes that, it's not like going to a building where you go all night and no one's going to bother you. You're in a, in an operating jail, that makes it a lot more complex. So, I'm sure that was, reflects some of the cost of the bid that we're looking at.
Certainly does, yep.
My, my only comment, Davis, is, is hopefully you caught it early enough before anything comes loose already. I'm sure you probably had some that are, but as they're redoing it, it could, we could end up being a little bit more.
Yeah, and we've been replacing the, some of the tiles as necessary in some of those really bad spots, and we've repaired the grout as needed. But again, it just doesn't stand up to the wear and tear that, that those operations put it through. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Those are the only questions I had.
No, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to authorize the responsible low bid award to Markote Upper Saddle River, New Jersey, in the amount of $128,900, with an additional 5% contingency for discrepancy spending by the Building and Grounds Director for unforeseen expenses related to the project.
Moved by Roskinck, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I think this kitchen produces more meals per day than any other kitchen in western South Dakota.
Yeah, it does.
Pretty critical that we get it done. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Comments? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks, Davis. Next, that brings us up to items from the Highway Department, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you here, first off, is authorization to let fencing project along South Rock, South Rockerville Road. Pretty confusing. We got South Rochford and South Rockerville going kind of at the same time here. 2021, the Black Hills National Forest approached us in wanting to close off that open range on South Rockerville Road, so that they had some money that they received through a grant program or, or from the federal government there allocated to them, and, and the, to the tune of about $140,000, and they did, they weren't able to, to get this project done, and they were looking for a place to spend it there. So, this project will remove three livestock guards and install fencing along South Rockerville Road. The Black Hills National Forest will then reimburse the Pennington County up to $140,000 for the materials. We did this similar project on South Rochford two years ago, actually. They pay for the material, we pay for the labor. It works well, and we get those cattle off the road. Makes for a much safer road, especially at night for, for motorcycles and cars. Pennington County will be responsible for all the, basically, the entire contract, and then once it's completed, the, the National Forest will reimburse us. And this work is scheduled to be completed in 2025. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let bids for FNC 2024 fencing for South Rockerville Road.
Second that motion.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Roskinck. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Item B is authorization to purchase two new motor graders off of the Minnesota State bid for a price of $406,698. The lead time for motor graders has greatly decreased. You know, we've seen it go from 12 to 14 months, probably three or four years ago, to two or three months. So, this should put delivery in that January to February timeframe, which is ideal for us. We can get all the stuff swapped over and get the, the new blades up and running in a time where they're not needed for maintaining roads. As we, we predicted when we went into our equipment replacement plan, our trade-in value has gone significantly up with keeping these blades under warranty. Preliminary numbers, we're going to get about $300,000 back for the two blades that we're going to either trade in or surplus. This year, so after January, when we receive these two new blades, our plan will come to fruition. We'll have all of our 10 blades under warranty, under that seven-year warranty. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ross.
I recall we decided to do this because we had one road grader that, when we, years back, that just one incident was like a transmission or something. It was hard to get the parts, but it was like 150, $200,000. Yep. This program, I think people need to know that when something goes wrong, these are under warranty and we're covered for that type of cost.
Yeah, I mean, for the public, we get a pretty significant discount on our blades. So, at $406,000, I believe, and Wade can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, he's in the audience here, but it's about a, a 40% government, governmental discount off that Minnesota State bid. So, if a general contractor is going out to buy these blades, they're paying upwards of $800,000. So, this is a, it's a good program that, like you were saying, that hydraulic failure could have cost the county 100, $130,000. But luckily, we caught it before it went out of warranty. We've had several instances here over the last six years that I've been here, that blades have been under warranty, and we've caught stuff early enough, and they could have been catastrophic, so.
And the flip side is, if you have the ones that we're going to trade in, with them still being under warranty, they're going to have a much higher value on the auction block.
Absolutely.
Mr. Drews.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Joe, I'm still a big believer in the warranty program. I think that was a great move to, to do that. Glad to hear that this will finish those up as far as getting them all on. Just a question on the budgeting. Has this come from your 2024 budget, then, or?
No, this will be from 2025, so.
But you have budgeted for them for 2025?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to authorize Highway Department to purchase two new 2025 John Deere 772G mortar graders from RDO Equipment Company, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $886,486.62 from the State of Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Bounty Program Contract, 219846.
Second.
Moved by Roskinck, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to items from Natural Resources, and I'll recognize Scott Guffey, and this has to do with the U.S. Forest Service Old Growth Draft for EIS comments. Before you start, Scott, I just wanted to take the moment to recognize the hard work that you do and the upkeep, because you're also on the NFAB Board with the Forest Service, and you've been following a lot of the work that happens in the hills with, as far as the management program and keeping track with this, and because those comments got to be done by the end of tomorrow.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Scott Guffey, Natural Resources Director, and I can't take full credit on this. I got to give it to Mitch Iverson, our consultant, that's been helping out the Black Hills area counties on the, uh, Black Hills new forest plan revision. He did do a deep dive on the old growth EIS, since it will impact the forest plan. So, he did a deep dive and prepared comments for the Black Hills area counties to adopt. He did a great job digging into it, and basically, what this old growth initiative would create, just another layer of bureaucracy that's going to delay efforts to try to manage the Forest Service. You know, they're trying to, trying to come to consistency across the nation on old growth management. That's tough, even within the Black Hills. How you manage old growth from the northern hills to southern hills is going to be different. It's a different type of forest, let alone comparing the Black Hills to like a forest in Alaska or California. They're, they're completely different. So, we feel those, those, um, management of old growth should be left to the Forest So we feel those those management of old growth should be left to the forest plans. So they're not going to tie the hands of your forest forest supervisors and also open up for litigation, because you're not following this this nationwide mandate, so that's basically what these comments kind of go spell out.
Well, I appreciate you doing the work with the WIR. We've been meeting monthly and talking about this old growth, and it was an executive order that come down, and it was coming down pretty fast, and I know a lot of other members were share the same sentiments that that you just described, you know, and some they're trying to hold some monthly meetings, but though even those are difficult to do, but I know our our surrounding states, Montana, Wyoming, those representatives have shared the same sentiments as the comments that you were able to provide. And so, like I said, I appreciate your work, and I'm glad you're doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from?
Mr. Chair, so when they say old growth, Scott, I assume that you're talking about the age of the tree and not the size of the tree?
Well, that's that's part of it, you know, and I can see where there could be try to be consistencies or get some sideboards on what is old growth, because you could could be interpreted in different ways. So I I could see see the point on that, but yeah, generally, it's a mature stand of of forests that they're looking at protecting, which I absolutely those should be protected, but don't don't, you know, in some cases, they're not even allowing cutting or trimming in there, and that's there should be allowed some harvest in there just to help protect that, so you don't so it's less susceptible to insect and disease and fires, so there's there's more than one way to protect it than just hands off.
So relative to the Black Hills, the impact that I see, it could limit the amount of timber that could actually be harvested by sawmills if we have any here in the future.
Yeah, yeah, it would create additional delays and potential litigation, that's going to further delay any type of harvest, yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So I think that, you know, as I read that, what it appears to me is they treat every tree as the same.
Right.
And there's there's no difference, and as you pointed out, just in the Black Hills alone, a number of different trees that we have. So, yeah, it'd been nice if they've been willing to, you know, really consider and go into the depth on what what old old growth is, but to really kind of lump it into one just doesn't work, so I would I certainly support, you know, what's been written to submit, so.
Thank you.
And I I appreciate you bringing up the Alaska tree and California. Those two right there are such drastic change trees, where in Alaska, I think old growth is they're two-inch diameter, some of them, is what they're considered old growth, and then you go to California, Yosemite, and they're six-foot.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So there's trying to find that, and then you look at ours.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
How much difference there is throughout the country?
Yep.
So, but I appreciate the work that you do, Scott.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the submission of the USFS Old Growth Draft EIS comments.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any further comments? Did you have a comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll get them submitted.
Next, we have a public hearing for SDCL seven-twenty-one, the budget, and I do have one speaker request for him, so I'll let the speaker request for him go first, Karen McNeil.
I'm Karen McNeil, and I'm a candidate for District Thirty-two, and I've been going around talking to constituents, and the main thing, I've talked to over a thousand people going door-to-door, and their main concern is property taxes. And a lot of these people are elderly, they have planned their budget based on, you know, their houses paid for, but these property taxes continue to increase, and I'm concerned, and they are too, that a lot of these people are going to get priced out of their homes. So I would just hope that you would take that under consideration when you look at these budgets. How are we going to protect these people? Because I don't want to see this happen to them. And in my household, we look at wants versus needs, prioritize needs over wants, and then see if the budget allows. So I just want to point that out to you on behalf of over a thousand constituents in this county that I've talked to. That's all.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate your public comments. Next, I'll recognize Auditor Cindy Muller for consideration of the physical year twenty twenty-five provisional budget. You have the floor, Cindy.
Thank you. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The budget that you have before you contains all of the motions that have been made since the provisional was approved, and it also has the other motion that I have asked for to decrease the unorg road fund operating transfer out to the highway fund by two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars, and to decrease the highway fund operating transfer in from from the unorganized road fund, two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. That is also already included in here. Basically, everything that goes into unorganized road gets an operating transfer to the highway fund, so I wanted to make that as clean as possible. You'll see that we had five TIFs that dissolved, so there was increment of over four hundred and seventy-three million that we were able to capture some growth on, which then also increases our taxable value for the county, school, city, all of the taxing entities there. So that helped bring our reserves up to about eighteen point seven is what I'm estimating at the end of twenty twenty-five.
And if I recall, they were before the TIFs retired, the reserves were like fourteen point two-one, so roughly four points.
Yeah, it 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 definitely helps to get those TIFs retired.
Absolutely. And I assume in the emails that we've gone back and forth that in two thousand twenty-five, there could be some other TIFs that would retire that would put us in a better situation.
There will be at least one, I know of, because I think it does reach that twenty-year limit. I am not privy, well, I don't have access to the debt on the other districts that are out there that are not Pennington County TIFs, so I don't know what the debt is on those.
But at yesterday's convention, the discussion on TIFs even with Wendy from the Department of Revenue, that these TIFs in Rapid City seem to retire a lot faster than other areas of South Dakota, just because of our economy. You can take a TIF and go out twenty years, but the ones in Rapid City seem to retire between six and eleven years, so I guess that's encouraging, that we can see these things retire, because once they retire, then taxpayers get their break.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to move to decrease the unorganized road fund operating transfer out to the road and bridge fund, two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars, and to decrease the road and bridge fund operating transfer in from the unorganized road fund by that two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, I'll get that out of the way, Cindy, so we can get to the budget. Do you you want to continue?
If anyone has any questions about how the budget sits as of now, I was obviously very pleased with being able to capture some more growth and and help bring up our unassigned fund balance at the end of twenty-five, so if the board is happy with the budget, I would ask for a motion to approve the budget resolution.
I'll I'll give everybody an option to speak, but number one, I'm glad it's good to see that we moved up to eighteen point seven, because I think we're for our reserves, we were looking at last year, didn't we, were we at seventeen last year? But anyhow, eighteen, we're shooting for twenty on that one side, but that still brings us up for the total reserves, probably over forty, with the signed and unassigned, if I'm correct. But, you know, one of the things I wanted to highlight most of all is the hard work that is done by our departments. You know, when they're given the direction at the beginning of the budget was when they present their budgets to the commission, that they give mandated and unmandated what could be cut, and it was up to this commission to look through those documents and and decide what some of the unmandated stuff, is that actually saving us money? If we do away with that, is it going to cost us more, which a lot of times it does, otherwise we wouldn't do it. But the departments did their due diligence to bring us a budget that they could support and support the employees. And so the work that they've done to for the employees, I believe, is outstanding, some of the sacrifices they've made to make this move forward. And so those are my comments on this year's budget.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
So I think the first budget session that I worked on was a little over five years ago, and I think when Commissioner Roskinect and I came on the commission at the same time, and I think at that time, we were looking at thirteen percent. And so I think that even though we've had a goal to try to get that to that twenty percent, I think eighteen point seven percent is pretty reasonable at this point in time, considering what we've gone through with COVID, et cetera, during the course of the years. And I think our departments have been looked very hard at how to keep budgets within a decent control, so I appreciate the effort that's gone into creating this budget, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ross.
I think we can all agree that the county's experienced growth, and with growth comes stress on all the departments, particularly the Registered Deeds, Planning and Zoning, and the Director of Equalization. And then with the with growth comes crime, so now you've got the public defender, you've got the state's attorney, you've got the jail, you've got the sheriff, you've got the care campus. I can just see that these budgets are going to be tougher and tougher every year to get nailed down, because we only have so many sources of revenue, and we're going to have to address this growth. I don't know how it's going to be, but at yesterday's convention, there was certainly talk about other sources of revenue besides taxing people out of their houses on owner-occupied properties, so yet there's a number of folks working on this issue, not just commissioners across South Dakota, but I think we're going to see some more action in the period this year, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five annual budget.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Moment of personal privilege?
You may.
So one of the things that was talked about during the convention was IM twenty-eight, which is the originally talked about as removing the sales tax from from groceries or from food. The language in that is is highly suspect as to how far that would actually go, because it talks about consumables. So I think if that does pass, I think we're going to be back here as a commission looking at the potential of cutting programs, not just reducing programs, but actually cutting programs. And so I think we just need to keep that in mind. We'll know what that result is after the November election, but it certainly would have a huge impact on twenty twenty-six, so.
And my the only thing I'll add, there's a lot of measures that you're going to be faced with when you go to the voting polls, and I encourage you to look at them and look and look at them way beforehand and make sure you understand what you're voting on, because there's some some of those are going to, they're pretty life-changing.
Thank you, guys, for your, Mr. Drew, for bringing that up, because you're absolutely right. The trickle-down effect, it's going to hit the city the hardest, but there is a trickle-down effect to the county. I mean, most of our funding comes from taxes, but it would, they would reduce their partnerships with a lot of stuff that we do, I'm sure, so we need to pay attention. With that, we'll be moving on, and I'll we'll move on to item fifteen, and this is an item from Human Resources, and I'll recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And on this day of celebration of our employees, I can't think of a better opportunity to share with you that I feel incredibly humble and honored to be here on behalf of our department heads and elected officials and their staffs to present to you the twenty twenty-five wage scale and ask for your approval of the position descriptions. So through the wage study, which you approved on July eighteenth, that Human Resources worked very closely with the departments to be able to put together new position descriptions, and then go through that rating process and create the wage scale for twenty twenty-five. And that's why I'm here before you today on behalf of all of our employees, asking that you would make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Carol. I I do want to make a comment that I want to show my appreciation to all the hard work that your department heads and leaders put into this effort. You've taken the time to sit down with all the commissioners more than once to explain how things were in departments, which is was very helpful, because there is no blanket effect to anything. And these departments has had to actually get in and do some very hard work in the compensation, putting, when they were looking at these positions, they had to go through each and everyone, what they are doing, and it wasn't the person, it's the position to move forward. You know, we were under in quite a few areas, just by the fact of what's happened in the last two or three years, and as government, we can't react as fast as the private sector. We we just can't. And so, but the hard work that that you all put into this is amazing, and it shows it's going to be it's going to stand out, not only in our community, but nationwide, the hard work that you guys put into doing your own analysis. And you own it. You guys worked it and did it, and you own it. And I just want to express my appreciation of all the hard work and dedication you got to the employees that work for Pennington County.
Mr. Chair, go ahead, Carol.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
I guess my comment would be, I think everyone needs to know what is different between this wage study and the two previous. Obviously, they didn't work, or we wouldn't be looking at this one, and why this one's going to work much better than the other two. And you don't go too deep in the woods, but I think in the weeds, but I think we need to just get an understanding why this one's different, and why we were very optimistic that this is going to, not perfect, yet we all understand that, but why this is in the long run, this is going to be a much better product.
So I'd be happy to do that on behalf of all of the department heads and elected officials, as well as our employees. It's exactly what Commissioner LaCroy said. It's that we analyzed every one of the positions, worked through that, and then we looked countywide, but we also did wage surveys with comparable entities and saw as far as what that is, and we looked at what's the midpoint of their wage scales, and then we adjusted it for inflation for into twenty twenty-five. And so at the final stage of that, we not only looked at each department individually, but we looked across the county to make sure that similar positions were being rated similarly, so that when they went on to the scale, that we didn't have that disparity between the various positions. And we did also take into consideration what is going on in the labor market, because there were some outlined positions, that we had this tool called Lightcast that was approved for having that software to be able to go in and see what is currently going on in the labor force as well, and use that as kind of one of those balancing labor force as well, and use that as kind of one of those balancing factors to make sure that we were validating our data. So it was a very robust process, and it's taken us nearly two years to get through the entire process. So it's been thoroughly vetted.
Yeah. Thank you. And if I recall, there was five categories, you know, you've got the professional, you've got support, and that was just all part of the, you know, you had to do that, you really had to nail down the job description so that you really understood what that person did and what that person should make, being competitive in the marketplace.
You're absolutely right, that we had five different grades that we determined in order to be able to rate the positions correctly. So we have the professional band, we have the support band, we have the technical band, which on any of the previous studies, both the support and technical bands did not fare very well. And then, of course, we have the public safety band, which making sure that they were being rated according to what those positions were. And then also, we have the medical band. So those were the five bands that we identified, and each one has their own scale.
And then I, I think the first year, you know, relative to the funding, might be the most painful, but I think after that, when you sit there and look at the cost savings going on, this is where the real benefit's going to be relative to cost savings.
Right, and, and something I think is important to understand, too, because this is Pennington County's tool, is that as long as the commissioners do understand that as inflation takes place, that we're adjusting that scale for the inflation, and the scale itself should, that tool should be just fine going into the future. And I think another side benefit of this was the collaboration effort that took place between the elected officials and the department heads to work in the very granular detail of the process, that any one of them knows how to score the positions and work closely with HR to make sure that we get them rated correctly.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I think, I think it's great that all of our departments, elected and non-elected, work together to come up with this. And I, I think you provide a great direction for it, but the Compensation Committee deserves a lot of credit for the work that they put into this.
Absolutely.
My, my final comment before I go to the board is, you're absolutely right, everybody worked together, but not everybody agreed all at once.
You're so right about that as well.
You know what I'm saying? And what, and what I mean by that is, there were some tough questions. There were some departments that didn't understand how things worked. It took extra time to sit down with them and work through it. Some may not a hundred percent agree, but they agree ninety-five percent of it. So, but the thing is, is everybody came to the table, talked civilly, and worked through it. And so I think that was the most amazing thing of seeing this, that process. And being on the Compensation Committee, I, I got to see all, all of that work come to fruition. And so that's why I appreciate the hard work that you all did on this, because it wasn't easy.
No, and I think this speaks so highly of the caliber of leaders that we have within the county, is you're absolutely right. They all came to the table with their own ideas and thoughts, and they didn't always agree, but they challenged each other to come to the best solution. So that is a sign of a true leader, is that they can be open to discussing, that they're not all followers, that if you say this, this is what you're going to do type of thing. They were all there at the table, working very closely together to challenge each other to get to the best solutions.
Yep. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the 2025 wage scale and accompanying position titles and ratings effective December twenty-second, 2024.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
On behalf of all of the employees of Pennington County, present and future, thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, that brings us up to items from the public, and I don't have any public comment forms. So at this time, I would look to the board to take a ten-minute recess to let planning set up.
Move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. I will come back into session, and that brings us up to the Board of Adjustments. I would look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into Board of Adjustments. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Christine.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner, Agenda Item Seventeen A is variance COVA twenty-four dash zero 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 eight to reduce this front yard setback and bring in existing single-family residents into compliance. The applicants are Andrew and Carla Schneider. Staff recommends to continue to the October first meeting. Due to only three commissioners present, we do not have supermajority to pass.
Thank you, Christine.
Mr. Chair, that'd be my motion.
I'll second that move to the next meeting.
Okay, moved to October third?
Yes.
Motion was made to...
October first, sorry.
October first, sorry. Good catch over there. Motion to move to the October first Board of Commissioners meeting and seconded by Ross Connect. Any further, no discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Christine. Next, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded, seconded by Ross Connect, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to item eighteen. Jason.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item eighteen A is vacation of section line right-of-way COVSL twenty-four dash zero 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 three to vacate approximately six hundred and sixty-five feet of section line right-of-way between sections thirteen and fourteen, township one north, six east, or range six east. The applicants are Joe and Alice Ratigan, and the applicant is in the audience if you have questions for him. Other affected landowner is Joe Thurbit Thuberge. Location of the property is three six nine five Cavern Road, currently zoned agriculture district and ranchette district. Access is off Cavern Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Criteria that staff uses to evaluate these requests is on the screen. This is the portion of the Exhibit A that the petitioner plans to file with the Register of Deeds. You can see this is the six hundred and sixty-five section line. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. The highway department did respond and say they are opposed to vacating any section lines that do not serve the public's interest, or public's best interest. No other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are requesting to vacate that six hundred and sixty-five feet going north and south. Topography is steep. You can see the topographical map here. There's about a two hundred and twenty-foot drop-off at the southern end of the applicant's property, so the likelihood of that section line being developed is pretty slim. Little history on the property adjacent to it, this is Mr. Thurbridge's property. They did go through the plating process in 2022, however, that plat has never been filed at the Register of Deeds. This is what the proposed lots looked like when they submitted that. As you can see here, Cavern Road is still going to extend far enough down to, to provide access to the proposed Lot Two. The county commissioners did approve rezone twenty-two dash eighteen to support that proposed plat, and that's why you see the two different colors on this map here, keeping proposed Lot Two agriculture district and proposed Lot One as rural, as a ranchette. Staff has verified, South Dakota codified law petition requirements have been met, and with that, staff recommends approval of section line right-of-way vacation COVSL twenty-four dash zero 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 three with one condition.
Is there any questions from the commission to Jason? Mr. Drews.
So you said they weren't filed?
The plat has not been filed at the Register of Deeds.
Okay, so, and how long ago was that plat done?
Twenty-twenty-two is when they started that with the city.
Okay. Do you know if there was a reason why the plat wasn't filed, or just...
I don't know the exact reason. The applicant may have some insight into that. I know he does talk to that property owner, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Is there any utilities in that part that they want to vacate?
There are power lines in there, yes.
So the, or the Black Hills Energy still have access to repair those power lines if needed, if that was vacated?
I believe that they would. They should have that. I can double-check and get back with you, though.
And then my other question would be, when you vacate a section line, if it borders, what's the rule of thumb? You got to have signatures from two, two neighbors?
It's two-thirds.
And they, they got those signatures?
Yep, so in this case, we have, in this portion of section line, we have both, both property owners that signed off on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only question was, I saw those power lines just...
Yep, and there are utility easements on these lots, too.
Okay, okay.
Since the applicant's in the audience, is there anything you want to share? You'd have to come up to the podium, I'm sorry. I just want to give you the opportunity to explain that whatever you need, you feel pertinent to your case.
Yeah, Joe Ratigan, I'm the applicant, as well as my wife and I are the property owners on the, on the west side. Reason we want to vacate this is really twofold. First of all, we don't think it'll ever be developed because not only do you drop about two hundred feet at the end of our property, but you drop another four hundred feet in a dark canyon. So it's just an impractical place to have a highway. So we want to get rid of the setbacks that are associated with them. You know, we gained thirty-three feet of utilization of our property. And then the second reason is, you know, way up north is where big game storage is located, and since that went into existence, we get a lot of lookers coming down onto our property, and the vast majority of them just come down, look around, and head back. Some of them, however, drive over our lawn to turn around, and so we can't put up a gate as long as there's an easement there. So we'd like to have the opportunity to, to put a gate. Now, I think as far as the plat being filed, you know, Joe Thuberge would be best to, to address that, but I think it's because the city had stipulations for that plating. I think Potable Water Well was one, and on the southern property. And the second, I believe, was they wanted to see a road district set up, and, and we have set up a road district. So I don't know why he hasn't platted it, filed that plat.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for enlightening us on what purpose.
So, Joe, what's the name of your road district?
Let's see, Cavern Road South.
Okay, thank you.
Because there's a Cavern Road North on the other side of Forty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. And Mr. Ross Connect?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve COVSL twenty-four dash zero 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 three with one condition.
Moved by Ross Connect?
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded by Drews for discussion, and I'll go to Mr. Drews.
So, Jason, is there any issues then, because that plat wasn't filed, affecting this, or not?
No, that's why I did evaluate that on the screen here. You can see in blue, I have the proposed vacation of section line, and then it's still, you can still see that it does provide access to that proposed Lot Two. So in the event they do file that plat, we don't have an isolated tractor.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't notice that, that leaves enough room at the top end for, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do you have a motion on the floor? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Or he's already gone. Oh, there he is. Thanks, Joe. Right, B.
Megan Talmage, excuse me, Megan Talmage, Planner. Agenda item eighteen B is major planned unit development amendment, CEOPU twenty-four dash zero 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 six, and it's to amend an existing planned unit development to add two cabins and two recreational vehicle sites. The applicant and owner is J&amp;A Recreation LLC, run by Justin Bueller. This is located at twelve seventy-two zero South Highway sixteen. It's a planned unit development with a current use of a recreational resort, and there is special flood hazard area on this property. The applicant is requesting, as stated before, the applicant is requesting two additional recreational vehicle sites and two cabins to be allowed in the planned unit development. Two of the additional recreational vehicle sites and one of the cabins would be located in the special flood hazard area. That would require a floodplain development permit to, before a building permit is pulled for any of those items. In 2023, there was previously a four-plex and camp sites on this planned unit development that staff removed with a, a different major amendment, and that was to make room for laundry facilities that are currently in a garage on the property. The applicant has now proposed separating out the gray water and the black water to allow for more septic capacity for the two additional cabins. The two additional RV sites won't be on that same septic system. They have a northern and a southern one, but after communicating with Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, it sounds like that northern system does have enough room without improvement. So to allow for the cabins, it sounds like he'll just need to separate his black water and gray water. But staff recommends approval with twenty-one conditions.
Mr. Ross Connect?
Well, I can say I'm pretty familiar with this property because I think I've appraised it four or five times over the years, and I drive by it just about every day, so, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve when Commissioner Drews gets out here.
Any other highlights, Megan, you, you can think of? You got twenty-two conditions.
Yeah, nothing in particular. It's mainly just the floodway, or floodplain, there's no floodway. The recreational vehicle sites will always have to be road-ready because they are in the floodway due to the most recent study that was done.
Okay.
The other cabins, it's up to the applicant to work with their engineer to figure out how it's going, how they're going to mitigate through a floodplain development permit.
So he's still got some more work to do with, with that?
Just a little bit.
But you got the requirements in there.
Yeah, it sounds like they're wanting to move pretty fast with the cabin that's outside of the floodplain. But that's...
Which one is, I got the picture, which one's outside the...
Yeah, so they have like a drive loop around their central pavilion area. It is the closest structure to that loop on the southern side.
Okay.
That one is outside of the floodplain.
Oh, I see now, he's kind of got it hand-drawn out as far as the hundred year, okay.
So that floodplain development permit, is that done, or is it subject to that being done?
It's, it'll be subject to the cabin, definitely, but there is an existing floodplain development permit on the property to show where that delineation is.
Gary, I went ahead, made the motion to approve COPU twenty-four dash zero 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 six with twenty-two conditions.
Need a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Megan. Next, we got item C, Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. Item number 17, or sorry, 18C is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 24 dash 10 for Pennington County to amend Section 304 accessory dwellings. Uh, the reason for this amendment is, uh, to be consistent with the Vacation Home Rental Section 319. Um, they did allow, um, vacation home rentals and ADUs. Um, so this section of the ordinance actually prohibited, um, vacation home rentals and ADUs. So this amendment is to correct that to be consistent with Section 319. Um, I do know that Commissioner LaCroix had a question on another section of this.
Thank you, Brittany. My question was, was if you go to your second page under six, item six, says primary dwelling, the principal dwelling on the property must be own, owner occupied or utilized as a long-term rental. You know, when I read this and as life's going on, folks, if we went through the, the ordinance for vacation home rental, all this type of stuff for affordable housing and so forth, I read it as saying that the principal dwelling on the property has to be owner occupied, not, we, we had a little bit of this discussion just before this because I didn't want to surprise staff with this. But that's how I, I read it. And quite frankly, and I, to me, we need to start looking at ways of our population that people that own properties such as in the hills or something like that, that they have a dwelling. Maybe they, they, as long as they're on the property, whichever dwelling they're on, it doesn't matter that they're there. Cause I'm thinking, uh, my thought process is if a spouse passes away and they want to move on to the smaller unit and rent out the other house in order to keep the property up and afford to live there, that they have that option. And when I read this, it didn't seem like that was an option. It seemed like the major house had to be owner occupied. Uh, Brittany's got some insight and Jason had some good insight on this, but that was my concern on, on this whole thing. I, 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 I like the idea of accessory dwellings. Uh, I think when we started out, it started being as parents would live on it, our family lives on it. But I think in this day and age, we got to be able to be creative in order to stay in our own homes. And that would be an option, I think. I don't, you can clarify how you took it, Brittany and Jason, if you'd like, or?
Sure. Um, Commissioners, we did speak with Commissioner LaCroix a little bit, um, and kind of working with this language to, um, have that intent be clear. Um, in order to do that, um, staff is uncomfortable just doing it on the fly here at a meeting. Um, we would like to work with other staff and with the state's attorney's office and bring some language forward, um, to kind of address those concerns if that's the wish of this board. So we would like to continue it to the October 1st, 2024 meeting in order to bring that forward. Um, and then, um, we can look at that, some different language.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
So that's not something that came to my thought as I read that. But I think, I think you make a good point. So I would agree with that.
That, that's my thought is that I, I just want to make it clear in case Jason and Brittany ever leave and somebody else has to take over, that they know what, it either be a, a clear intent or doesn't get misunderstood. Um, because I do think that's a problem in our community is affordable housing. And I've, I've seen it over and over where people are sharing the same property, family members, or even, uh, someone renting out their basement or a space in their house in order to make the payments and get by. And I really think on this part, after seeing the citizens up in Hill City when we were talking about property taxes and so forth, that when I looked around the room, I mean, it was, it was more of the older generations that had worked their way and bought those properties and had them for years. And they want to stay there and they need to find a way to be able to do it. And having 2,100 square foot house, when you're an empty nester and just two of you or one of you anymore, isn't feasible, but you still have your property and you want to live on it. And it's, it's a good way to be able to, to do that, I think. So that's my intent. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew what my intent was on, on this. Any further comments?
So I guess the question is, is you feel you got enough direction from the commission at this point in time than to continue working on that and trying to come up with it? Okay.
Yes, I feel like if, um, staff can work with it with the state's attorney's office with this direction, then we can bring back some language proposals, um, at the next meeting.
Super.
So I'd look for a motion to continue to the October, or do you need a little more time?
I think October 1st would be adequate.
October 1st.
I'd make that motion to move this to, uh, October 1st. I will second that motion.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinet. Any further comment? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to items from Chair or Commission members. Is there any items from the Commissioners that they'd like to, to share before we go to committee reports or other reports? Seeing, Mr. Roskinet?
Uh, I think we can, you, myself and Commissioner Drews, we attended the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners and county officials. Um, actually that was, uh, our executive meeting was the 16th and then, uh, the 17th and 18th were, uh, opened it to the Commissioners and elected, uh, auditors and highway. It's, it was really a well-attended event. Uh, there's some really good, uh, I call them courses that I took. And you can never really learn enough, uh, when you go to those. So, uh, I appreciate Commissioner Drews because he was the president to help him facilitate that and putting it together.
Thank you, Ron. I will, I do have an item and I would like, along the same lines as Mr. Roskinet, uh, recognize Commissioner Drews for being the state, for the president of being South Dakota Association of County Officials, or County Commissioners. I believe you did an exceptional job. All the work that you did legislatively, the time that you put in, you, Chris, and working with, uh, the lobbyists and everybody up there, I believe is the most representation Pennington County's had a long time. And there were results, relationships built. And I think, you know, I just wanted to express my appreciation as you being the president and working and guiding that association to where it needs to go. Uh, it, it's going to be a better association coming in the, the future. And I just wanted to take the moment to show my appreciation and to highlight the work that you've done, Mr. Drews.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I might add, during that first luncheon, uh, I thought one of the best presentations was, uh, put on by Will Mortenson. I mean, he just laid it out, uh, where South Dakota's going and, and where we need to, where we're at and, you know, where we need to go. But also in executive session, we had Senator Dibert and, uh, he's on the, uh, committee this year in Pierre, explaining what they're doing in Pierre. And I think it, the common goal is, and we've discussed it, it's property taxes. You know, people are just getting taxed out of their house. And if something isn't done one of these years, it's, it's, the people are going to speak and something will be done. So I, I think, I think the folks in Pierre are listening. Uh, I, I just think we, we really need, I appreciate the summer studies. I really do. I, is it, are they going to lower property taxes? No, they're not. Are we going to do better job assessing property? Maybe. That's not going to reduce our property taxes, uh, to enough that I think it's going to be a, an impact. But I think we're getting the attention of those folks in Pierre. And, uh, anyhow, it's just, we just, uh, we just have to keep trying. But, you know, the convention, that was a good, uh, good way to, for people to network and look, look for ideas.
I agree. Any further comments under items from Commission members? If not, we'll go into, uh, meeting and committee reports. Uh, Mr. Drews?
So I'll continue on with the, uh, County Commissioners and your convention. Briefly, I appreciate your comments, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, it was a, uh, joy for me to actually be able to serve in that capacity this year and the, receive the support of this commission to do that. Uh, there was, there is a lot of learning to do each and every year, uh, relative to it. I think that, uh, we did have a good year as far as the legislature is concerned. And I, I don't anticipate, you know, with the election coming up and as many new members as there will be in, uh, two bodies, uh, that anywhere near the number of things. And, uh, it all has to do with the economy also at the same time. And so I, I don't anticipate that we're going to be able to see as many, uh, positives, uh, from the legislative session this year as we did last year as far as counties are concerned. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we don't continue to try to educate, uh, those that, uh, of what the needs are of each and every county and, and the, uh, financial burden that it does place with, uh, counties only having the property tax for funding sources. But I, I always need to point out that still of those property tax dollars that are paid in, only 27 cents of each dollar is used by county government. Going back to, uh, September 4th, uh, on the, on the county's webinar, uh, monthly webinar, uh, we had Dustin Height, the Recovery Branch Chief for the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management. He laid out how the public assistance program can be initiated when major events occur. So obviously we had some major events, mostly in eastern South Dakota this year, uh, that kicked that into action. But he explained, uh, exactly what has to take place in order to, uh, get those designations and, and make that work. On September 5th, I attended the, uh, Western Dakota Regional Water System, uh, meeting. They held their, uh, annual meeting and brought everyone up to date on the progress of working on delivering water regionally to where needs exist and on eventually bringing Missouri River water to western South Dakota. On September 9th, I participated in the Rapid City, excuse me, Air Quality Board meeting. Uh, during the course of 2024, we only had one air monitoring report recorded this year, that being, uh, at the end of March. On September 10th, uh, I met with our highway department and some concerned citizens in Dark Canyon. Uh, some trees in the right of way create challenges, especially when the highway department is attempting to clear snow from the roadway. This will probably be on our October 1 Commission meeting agenda. On September 11th, I attended the third meeting of the Legislative Summer Study Session on Property Tax Methodology in Pierre. Several legislators and members of the public testified. Probably the major testimony came from a House candidate, Tim Goodwin, uh, suggesting a replacement of property taxes on residential to an increased sales tax. Uh, their next meeting and probably final meeting is scheduled for October 9th, also in Pierre. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Roskinet?
Uh, the only one I can really speak on today would be the Building Committee. And, uh, there we just did updates on, uh, our current projects, which would include repurposing the 900 concourse. Uh, that's, uh, currently underway. And I heard that they're making good progress. And then the, uh, repurposing the Public Defender space, which will be in, at 14 St. Joe. Uh, and then some of the work they're doing on at Juvenile Services. Uh, I recommended that we do a presentation on our past space needs and our present space needs and our future space needs so that we could sit there and maybe go back four or five years where we were at, uh, relative to space where we, did we have enough space five years ago? And go forward, uh, into the present to show what the Building Committee has done to address those concerns so that, uh, we can not put this presentation in one presentation, but cover maybe seven to 10 years where we were, where we're at and where we're going and what we're doing about it. So that presentation will be sometime, and what it costs, you know, we want to talk about cost, too, because we, there, there is a cost savings, uh, the way the Building Committee went out and looked for alternatives opposing the buying a raw piece of land somewhere and building from scratch because there's no way we could afford that. And I think we can all agree based on Elevates projections of growth, uh, sooner or later, we're going to need more space. I mean, it's just, the city's in the same, uh, crunch, Rapid City, box cylinder. They had to move part of their facility to another, uh, building because they just rounded the space. So hopefully this presentation will shed some light on what the Building Committee did and what we're doing to, uh, address that issue.
Good. Thank you, Ron. Mine is, they got me on the list as Pennington County Housing redevelopment. That's not me, that's you. But, uh, Compensation Committee meeting, I didn't, wasn't able to attend that, uh, last week. And I think we have our next, but you've seen the results of what their recommendation was to us today. So they, they did their review and they decided to bring it forward today, but I wasn't in attendance at that meeting. Uh, the other thing I'd like to bring up is, thanks, Mr. Drew, for bringing up Dark Canyon because, uh, part of my job this week was, we had Zeke Lee come in from NACO, from the WIR conference. And he was a speaker at, at the conference, but his, the other part of his responsibilities coming today was to see Rapid City for the conference that, uh, NACO's WIR conference is coming to Rapid City in May of 2025. And so that's where I got, I took Mr. Zeke, uh, up to the Sanford line, uh, lab and met with those individuals so he could see the work that's happening in South Dakota with the science work and the dark matter. That's a possibility of, of a site visit for, uh, WIR. For those of you who don't know what WIR, it's a western interstate region. It's a 15-state region of the Midwest of county commissioners who look out for the Midwest, mid, mid, midwestern way of life, which is, has to do with, uh, PILT, which is Payment in Lieu of Taxes for Federal Land, and also SRS, which is Secure Rural School Funds that we get. But they do a lot more than that. There is the Public Lands piece that just started up last year to help promote counties' needs, uh, to Congress. And I, that started up just last year at the, they are doing a wonderful job. But I kind of went in off of Dark Canyon. So on our way up to Sanford Mine, I decided to take them up to 385 so they could see the hills. And before I did that, I stopped off at Dark Canyon with them because I was asked to take a look at that, the trees in the right of way and that type of stuff. So I had the eyesight. I took Zeke and Mark O'Connell from Wisconsin. And he, what is he, Gary? He's the director of this?
He's President and CEO of the Wisconsin Association of Counties.
Yep. So he was with us. And so I just explained to these people, can we stop here and take a look at this? This is, you know, our direct, our highway department wanted to take a look at that. So I had some unbiased people in the car looking at the area and so forth. But, uh, wanted to take, make the point that I, I went and visited the site. Uh, so I already brought up a little bit about Mark O'Connell and, and Zeke touring them up at the Sanford, uh, laboratory. We were at the visitor center and they learned a lot. And me being a South Dakota resident, I learned a lot. I've never taken the time to sit back and listen to the, what's all happening there. And I've heard about dark matter and how important it is and da, 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 da. But until they, I asked the question, what is dark matter? You know? And then they went through it and the scientific and the, all that type of stuff was pretty amazing. And so Zeke was pretty impressed with that. Uh, the second day of the conference, I took Zeke to, I think is one of Pennington County's highlighted spots, which is the care campus. Uh, you know, where we house, not only do we have the treatment, we have the detox, we have the safe solutions. Uh, and we're starting that new program there that Tony's running. And, and Zeke was just amazed. He's from Salt Lake City, knows a lot of the stuff that's happening in that city. He says, this facility, I've never seen anything like it. And that's, and he signed a waiver and he got to see some real life situations. And so, uh, I think that. And so, I think that really enlightens people by being able to come here, see this stuff, experience. But even enlightened me with the Sanford Lab, you know, living here all this time, being able to go up there and get into depth of what's going on helped me. You know, just because we live here doesn't mean we're always in the hills and seeing what's happening. We always say we can do it next weekend, and we never do. So, it was, that was a really good visit with WIR. I'm really excited about them coming here. That's going to be able to bring all the counties in our state to be able to attend a conference that is for them, for the Midwest, and be able to afford to come to do it. So, even our small counties. So, I'm really excited about that. Otherwise, I didn't, I seen Joe's Touch the Truck Family Night on Facebook, but I wasn't able to attend that. That looks like that was probably a pretty fun event, too. And I think that's one way to get our youth, young people involved more into the skilled labor market, you know. So, with that, I don't have anything else unless you guys have an update or a comment.
I might add, the last seminar that we had at the convention was, I don't know the doctor's name, but she did a presentation on artificial intelligence. She's probably one of the renowned in the world with knowledge on AI. And it's, that one hour, she covered a lot of stuff, but this is something that we really need to be aware of. It's out there, and a lot of people don't even know it's out there. But anyhow, it was a good presentation.
He's President, Dakota State University.
Yep.
And that brings up a good point that she was there, you know, and when me and Mr. Drews were in Tampa, that was one of the highlights of the NACO, too, is talking about AI. And it's coming, well, it's here and things are happening, but I also want to remind people that I think it's next month. The Vicarage Foundation is having a presentation, and they have a renowned speaker on AI also. And I made a point to watch the TV special a couple of weeks ago with Oprah Winfrey talking about AI, bringing in people, what is AI, and trying to explain. I think there's a lot of negatives that can come out and a lot of positives. So, but it's, it's coming, and it's going to be just like the internet is what they're talking, so.
I think there's a lot of countries, and each one trying to get part of the puzzle. But if I recall, she said the winner takes all on that one.
With anything, nothing else remaining, I'd look for a motion, we have no executive session, to adjourn.
I'd move we adjourn.
Moved by Drews.
I'll second.
Seconded by Roskin. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.